Okay, so why don't we get started? As you may know, I'm not Jen Eller. I've had a palace coup and taken over. She will be back unfortunately. We're awaiting our state representatives, but I thought, why don't we start with the guidance report?
Could we approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
You're getting out of time.
Go ahead.
How soon they forget.
They force them to take the job.
She doesn't want to steal Pauline's seat though.
No, go ahead. She's snoozing.
She's with the, okay.
She can sit down here.
Well, thank you so much for having us back again. We are excited to report out about the year that we've had. Last year's presentation was pivotal for us in the sense that you were able to grant us the new testing coordinator position, which has been absolutely life-changing this year, especially for me because I was the test coordinator before. So obviously with exchange of offering that new position, the expectations were so that we would be able to meet with our students more, one-on-one, face-to-face, but also in the group setting. So in order to track that or know what we were doing, we started to, we identified and then implemented a new tracking system to record all of these student visits that we had. We've never done this before, so we didn't have any baseline data to compare it to. So we look forward to being able to compare it to other data in the future. But I can say personally, because I was that counselor who was doing all of the tests coordination, I can say there has been an incredible increase in the amount of time that I've been able to see and work with students. So I'm so, so thankful for that. So today, we're going to report out a little bit about some of the positive changes that we've seen this year come to us with the addition of the testing coordinator, Drew Moore. And then also, we were fortunate to have Shonda Bartlett as an intern in the office this year too. So it's been really nice to have those extra set of hands. So as a department, we have increased student contacts for, like I said, although there's no baseline data, I can say pretty surely that we have increased. With over 1,800 counseling sessions with the 527 students at Nantucket High School, there is no student that has not been met with one-on-one. We can say that with all certainty. Visits were coded as academic, social-emotional, or college and career. In the packet that's been provided to you, you'll see the breakdown of the counselor one, two, and three with the exact hours, which was kind of really interesting because, not that I would think it would or wouldn't be, but I was just surprised at how similar all of our numbers were with the actual, like the total number of us for the year so far, but also even with the different kind of categories, which was pretty interesting. Academic and college counseling constituted the majority of the sessions, and we think that that's probably because the social-emotional was slightly lower because when they come to us, we meet and have that initial kind of triage meeting, and if it's something that needs a lot more follow-up or wraparound, then that's when we work closely with Julie Kingston, and Julie Kingston kind of takes over with a lot of the more severe cases or the students that need more of a need. So counseling sessions have ranged anywhere from 10 to 120 minutes, and so I think that that's really important to point out, just because a two-hour session, first of all, is a really long time. But on the other hand, whether that meeting is just 10 minutes or the 120 minutes, it's really, a lot of our time is spent not only just with the student, but then with the wraparound services and the follow-up of, you know, whatever that student needs immediately, whether it is calling of an outside service or a parent right away, but then the follow-up emails with parents and teachers to set up the extra tutoring sessions, or after-school help, or before-school help, or working with the TA or the, in the SSC room to work with the TA for additional help there. So I just think that it is important to mention that the wraparound is just as long, if not even longer, than the actual session right with the student. 205 students have been seen four or more times. And of those 205 students, 70 percent of those have been seen more than four times. 19 students have been seen 10 or more times. And then the highest reported counseling count for one student was 34 sessions. So I know that we talked a lot about seeing students for a certain amount of time, but when, because this is the first year that we've used this actual tracking system, it's been really interesting to see what students need more of or less of, or, and so on and so on. And then it was even kind of a question of us, like when that student came in for the 33rd time, you know, you think to yourself, you're not going to say, "No, I've seen you 33 times, I need to see others." You know, you give the students what they need, and that's why the numbers are so, so interesting and relevant to look at, I would say. But I'm really looking forward to following through with this tracking system and seeing where next year takes us.
In addition to our individual sessions with students, we have been able to increase our classroom time with students, which is really exciting for us, and that's been one of our big accomplishments from this year. We have completely revamped the guidance curriculum. So we updated and in some cases completely changed the curriculum that we were presenting to each grade, and so I'll walk through those lessons. But it's worth noting that for the first time ever, we think, we were able to see all four grades by February. And so the kids are able to get more familiar with us, and we're able to provide those important guidance lessons even earlier in the year, which has been great. For our freshmen, we created a new freshman survey through Naviance to focus on the social-emotional transition to high school. So this is the first time that we've really been focused on that social-emotional piece for freshmen specifically, and the data was really interesting, but also helped prompt meetings with students. If we saw answers that we were concerned about or that we thought prompted additional or needed additional follow-up, we were able to call those freshman students into our offices. And in addition to that, we saw more students taking initiative to come to guidance because they knew who we were early on in the school year. So that was exciting for us. For the sophomores, that's typically the forgotten grade. I think last year, we weren't able to go into the sophomore classes at all, but we did make it to the sophomore class, and actually, I think that was our favorite lesson this year. We created a cahoot aimed at asking questions about post-secondary options to get them thinking about the options out there beyond high school and what they needed to do to start preparing for those options. And then our favorite part was the transcript lesson, which we provided in the packet to you, but that's something that Courtney has wanted to do for a long time, but just didn't have the chance to do that. And so what we did was comb through past graduates' transcripts, and we selected three different transcripts. We whited out all identifying information, and we provided those to the sophomore classes so that we could teach them what different transcripts look like. We had an ideal transcript with pretty much straight A's and high-level classes. Then we had a transcript that wasn't so great freshman year, but started to improve sophomore year, and then did much better junior and senior year, and that was a student who had a lot of college opportunities when they graduated. And then we had a transcript that wasn't so great, that was sort of a warning to the students. And so we talked through that lesson in depth with the sophomores, and actually, after we had that presentation, quite a few sophomores came to guidance asking for their transcript. So that was, it seemed to be an engaging and successful lesson. And then for our juniors, we typically have gone into junior classrooms once per year in the spring, but we moved up that timeline, so we saw juniors in February, and that enables us to see them again in the spring, since junior year is such a crucial year to prepare for everything that comes senior year with the college application process. We thought that that was an important update, and so we plan to go in to see them again and talk about the logistics, sort of the nuts and bolts of the college application process. But we had, we've already been in to talk to them about career exploration to get them to start thinking about everything that's out there for them after high school. And then for our seniors, we created a new PowerPoint presentation. We actually didn't have one before, and so it was really us going into senior classrooms in the beginning of the year and giving a lot of information verbally, but we were hearing from kids that that was a little bit overwhelming. And so we revamped that whole system, put together a more accessible PowerPoint and some packets. We added a document request form, which helps streamline the college process, and we were in the classroom early in September. So we feel like we've had a successful year with our classroom presentations.
And there is another positive change that we have this year, and this is, we have introduced, implemented, and ran out our first-ever dual enrollment class with Cape Cod Community College. And this is a critical thinking and reading class. A lot of schools, high schools in America have this dual enrollment course, and we never had, but we were always talking about this. So finally, this year, it became true. So it's offered during semester two. There are three students currently enrolled in this course, and two of those three students are first-generation students. And the goal of having a dual enrollment class is really to make college more accessible to all kinds of students with different backgrounds, and it shows us that it's been a really helpful class for those three students. Their professor, Cape Cod Community College professor speaks highly of them, and we received a very positive feedback from all three students as well. Research shows that dual enrollment class can help undocumented students to picture themselves in college and have an access to a college. So we are very proud to offer this opportunity for our undocumented students. We are in the process of to arrange the same course, or maybe a different course, for next year, so we are in touch with Cape Cod Community College Coordinator. And we already have seven students who are interested in taking this course next year, so hopefully the number will grow, and we just thrilled to have this opportunity.
And to continue along the same vein of making college more accessible to all of our students, not just the students who always go, or their parents went, or they have grown up knowing that they need to go to college, or that that's just part of what's in their family's structure. Several months back, Mr. Cozor approached me that he had secured some funds to implement this new Take Your Dreams Across the Sound program, where we are hoping to take sophomores, in particular, students off-island to go visit different colleges, to get them onto a college campus, have them look around, feel what it's like to be a college student, to excite them, and again, just be able so that they can see about making their dream a reality. In particular, this trip is focused on students whose families wouldn't have the means to typically take them off-island, and it does include a lunch and a dinner, and a nice coach bus trip to wherever we're going. We did look into several different colleges this year and had different dates and such lined up, but with the schedule coming and there was some math MCAS situations going on, we didn't, we couldn't have it too early. And then too late, a lot of the colleges, obviously because they close earlier than we do, were shutting down. But we do have, we're very excited to announce a trip scheduled to UMass Amherst on Wednesday, May 29th, and the permission slips were given out on Monday, and we started to collect permission slips this morning, and it's been an amazing positive response from the teachers and from the students, and from the parents especially, with even making different requests of what they'd want to see, have the students see on campus and such. But we're so excited to kick off this new initiative and bring the kids at the end of May, just to kind of show them what college is all about.
And then our last update from this year is regarding our communication with outside organizations and local businesses. That's always been an area that we've wanted to expand in, but just because of time, it's sort of been at the bottom of the list. But this year, with the new testing coordinator position, it's one of the areas that we've really been able to focus on because we've had more time. And so we've increased our communication with these outside organizations and businesses, and expanded opportunities for students through partnerships. And so some of the local institutions that we have met with this year include the NHA, Lemon Press, the Food Pantry, the Rotary Club, and we've had success in connecting students to opportunities with some of those organizations, partially because one of our initiatives was to create a shared document throughout the school that all staff has access to, that keeps track of these different opportunities that come up when we meet with these different organizations. And so we, as well as the teachers, can access that document to share the opportunities with students and help connect them. So that's been really exciting for us, and it's something that hopefully will continue.
Right. So again, we just want to thank you guys for the addition of the position because it has truly made a huge change in my life personally, but I think also the department. And I think that as a department, for the past nine years that I've been here, we've always done a great job seeing the kids and meeting the students' needs, but with the addition of this position and getting a lot of that test coordination out of the office, it's really given us the opportunity to be more innovative and make new changes that have made this even better this year, so.
Well, I want to say thank you guys, and you've done a wonderful job, I think, in being able to meet with students that amount of time. I just have a couple of questions for you.
Of course.
For the dual enrollment, do they travel to CC or C's at all?
No, they don't. It's offered here in our conference room, so they meet with the professor. It's a live-stream program, so they meet through the devices, and it's very typical these days. They see each other, they communicate with each other, they meet three times a week, and they have fourth time on Friday when they go to the library and they work on their assignments there.
Well, that's nice. Thank you. Courtney, I was wondering if at some point, you know, of course not right now, I was hoping you could drill down to how many of each class you've had a chance to meet with, was it initiated by you, or was it initiated by the student, that kind of detail?
Of course.
There are a few of us on the committee that are still interested in getting you more help. So I think having those kind of numbers would be helpful to sell the, you know, the need.
I can get that to you, of course.
And Anita, when you mentioned classroom time, can you kind of describe what that is? I don't mean to jeopardize.
Sure. We have been working with the English and Social Studies Departments, and so they have been allowing us to go into the classroom for each grade level, and we typically spend a full class period. And we're working with the students both as a group, but then we typically have activities, and then it breaks down into small groups or one-on-one time. So we're getting to know the students pretty well in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's good. I'm delighted to hear that you're making the progress you are. Sounds like it's even more than we had hoped.
Thank you.
Pauline?
My notes are on the table.
We can read them for you.
No, I have my memory. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's really helpful for us to hear all of what's going on, and I think the position, the new position certainly freed you all up, so you weren't necessarily bogged down with all the testing requirements that you had before. It's still, and I'm familiar with NET funding for the Dreams Across the Sound.
Oh, yes.
But I'm still sort of just wondering how we can help support the students who, again, are not having those conversations at the dinner table because they are first-generation to go to college. Parents don't know how to navigate the scholarship piece that we're just going through. It seems that every year, when there are certain students that I'm speaking with, and I'll mention, "Oh, do you know about this and that?", they didn't. And I understand you can't make someone do something, but I'm just wondering how we can help you support the students so that perhaps it could be a classroom time when the scholarships come out, that you could list all the scholarships, and everyone could have applications in front of them. And maybe this is too much, but I just think there's too many children missing the opportunity, and the ones that tend to do well with the scholarships are the ones who have the savvy parents who are saying, "Get this in and get this in." And I just would love to see a little bit more of an even groundwork for these kids, because I think there's a lot of kids that could really use the scholarships that miss out. And again, to continue the conversation of what's your career or what's life going to look like after school, and giving them the opportunity. Because you don't know what you don't know, right?
Right.
And so you can come into the classroom, but again, if a child doesn't have someone that they can go home to and continue that conversation, that's sort of the population that I'm sort of focused on, that I did read on everything, and I think we've made tremendous growth, but just as we're thinking about reaching all students, if you could just think about that, I don't know.
Well, I think the testing coordinator has opened up opportunities for our guidance people. I just wish Kathy had a chance to work with them.
I know, right.
But I think that that is going to allow these things to develop. I think, I agree with you. I'm very concerned, particularly with the students we get that have English problems that are coming in in late middle school and high school, what, how do we get those kids opportunities? Because they're our students, and they deserve chances, and just because they came here late or had interrupted schooling, we have to do that. But I think we're seeing now the benefits of having the testing coordinator. You know, you always wonder, it's like Gengi, you know, you pull out one thing and everything falls into place, and I think having that has allowed our guidance staff to really innovate and move ahead, and I'm really thrilled with what you guys have done.
I would also just give a shout-out for the innovative pathways.
Yes.
Because I think, I know for a fact that when people, professionals have come in from other businesses, they've ended up, your students have been hired. Shiva Lucy Alhaba Masam is one example of being able to do a presentation and getting the kids excited, and then, you know, I've received emails from Shiva Lucy to say, "I had five kids, all want to apply for jobs," and I think she hired them all.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's another nice connection, to have people come in and talk to the students and get them excited about the jobs, so kudos to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our guests, Representative Fernandez and Senator Seer.
Steve Sort of it. Good to see you.
This is Donna Butler.
Tim Nakary. Hi. How are you?
I'll come back.
So, do we have some questions?
Oh, I don't know. Did they not have a presentation?
We have a presentation for you.
Okay.
And thank you.
Can I ask first who's who, just to make sure?
Sure. So I'm Julian Seer. I represent the Cape and Islands District, so this is 20 communities across most of Cape Cod, Mashpee, Barnes-Swell, out to Province Town, Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, and the Isle of Jaffa Islands.
And I'm Dylan Fernandez. I represent a smaller district, but all of Nantucket, all of the Vineyard, Cotty-Hunk, and I'm part of Falmouth. But most people think I'm Julian, and most people think he's me, so it's okay.
Dylan's just the cuter, slimmer version. But we do work really closely in partnership. You know, this is a very special kind of part of the world and district with a lot of advantages, but also a lot of challenges. And I think that actually, when you look at education in Nantucket, actually, the Nantucket challenges on education actually really kind of sum up where broadly a lot of the region is going. What I think we wanted you to do, just briefly, is to give you an update where things are as it relates to education from a state perspective, and then certainly, you know, glad to take any questions, and thank you for having us. This is something we had wanted to do for quite some time, and finally, the schedule is aligned. So this session, I actually have the honor of sitting on the Education Committee. Senate President Karen Spilka really has prioritized education. She got into, got into public service as a member of the school, of her school committee in Ashland, and has really made education a priority. My start in public service actually dates back to my days at Naussett Regional High School. I was a pretty involved student, actually was a student, I was a student representative on the school committee, and the first thing I ever did politically was organizing an override effort to pass an override in the Naussett schools in 2003, which had we not passed, we would have eliminated 40 teaching positions and staff. And that was the, I was a big choir geek at the time, and my teacher was pink slipped. And so that's how kind of I come to this world. So I'm thrilled to be serving on the Education Committee this session. There's a lot, there's been a lot percolating around the need to look at education reform, particularly from a funding perspective. In 1993 was the last time when we had really kind of truly transformational reform. A whole host of pieces came out of that, including the current Chapter 70 funding formula. I'm actually a product of those reforms, so I was going through early stages of elementary school, was actually the first class to graduate that had an MCAS requirement, so I've lived some of this. You know, the school funding formula, I want to just give a brief overview of, you know, how it works and why it needs to be fixed. I think you folks will know this, but just to provide some framing. You know, access to quality education for every student is enshrined in our state constitution. That's actually something that's relatively unique. In the Constitution, it says that "Shall be the duty of the legislators and magistrates in all future periods of this Commonwealth to cherish the public schools and grammar schools in the towns." And so the purpose of the school funding formula is to ensure that every school district in the Commonwealth is adequately and equitably funded, regardless of the community's wealth. So how does this work? The calculation in that funding formula, first, they calculate what's considered a foundation budget, so an estimate from the state of basically what it should cost to educate a student in the school, taking into account specific enrollment and demographic characteristics of each district. Then there's a calculation, this is how it should work. Then there's a calculation of that foundation budget, how much should be contributed from a city or a town, based on the relative wealth of a community. And then the difference between those two is how we calculate, which is called Chapter 78. There's a whole host of numbers, I think as you folks know, that go into calculating this, several in particular, so there's a, the budget is, a foundation budget is calculated. Additional factors go into that foundation budget, specifically English language learners, so the number of English language learners that you have in a district, and then also what's called an economic disadvantage, or sort of a socioeconomic number. For you folks, this is really big. My understanding is you've seen a 650% increase in English language learning students over 12 years. That is very dramatic. It may be among the most dramatic in the state. Forty-five percent of your students, you know, when they go home, English isn't spoken. And you also have 36% of students on free and reduced lunch. Part of the conversations we're having now about the funding formula is how have we gone about calculating both English language learners and low-income students, and how do we, how do we actually count that and capture that? And you'll hear more from Dylan on that. So how is the actual local contribution calculated? So the original formula in 1993 just took into account property values that certainly disadvantages us here on Nantucket. It disadvantages us across the region. Reforms in 2008 actually added in a local contribution, local income calculation, so to get a sense of the relative wealth of people who live here. That helped us out, helps us out a little bit in the formula. And that gives us the ability to pay it, or what's called, in technical terms, the combined effort yield. So what's happened with the, or how the formula is supposed to work is that poorer communities get more resources, and wealthier communities get less resources from the state and are able to fill in the gap. But what we've seen happen is that the foundation budget significantly underestimates actual costs. So for instance, in health insurance, the foundation budget underestimates across the state 1.44 billion in health insurance costs to school districts, so we're not accounting for that. Special ed costs, over a billion in in-district special ed costs that we're not, not taking into account. And so there's been a drumbeat for some time to Um, special ed costs, uh, over a billion in, in district special ed costs that we're not, uh, not taking into account. Uh, and so there, there's been a drumbeat for some time to really look at the inequity across the districts. Uh, what the foundation budget also is not taking into account, and you really see this in Nantucket, is what, what the foundation budget says it's going to cost to educate a student versus the actual cost. And so, you know, the foundation budget, if I got this correct, for, for Nantucket, in FY, the FY 19 number this fiscal year should be about $10,930 per pupil. Uh, your actual cost, I think, is 21,000, over 21,000. Um, but, but this has resulted in inequity across districts and it's actually exacerbated inequities. So, for communities that are able to support more funding for, for the schools, uh, they're able to do so. Uh, one example, an example here is comparing Chelsea, which is a, a pretty poor community right next to Boston, to Watertown, which is a slightly wealthier community. Under the foundation budget, Chelsea sort of have about, um, it should cost about $12,260 to educate a student, whereas in Watertown, it should cost about $10,800 a student. Well, the actual spending in Chelsea is closer to about $13,000 a student. In Watertown, it's over $19,000 a student. Um, so, so we've been seeing just, uh, an exacerbation of inequities across the re- across the Commonwealth. Um, and so what Dylan's going to talk about is, uh, efforts that began in, in 2014 with the creation of a Foundation Budget Review Commission, uh, basically a state entity to take a look at this, uh, how we calculate the foundation budget and how you'd reform that. Um, and so Dylan, you want to, you want to, you want to talk about what the foundation budget came up with?
Yeah. And the reason, I mean, and the reason we're here is that something's going to move this session, reforming this formula. Um, and that's based in large part because of the, out of the findings of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And so we just wanted to meet with you guys, and we've been going around meeting with all the, the school committees in our district, uh, proactively early in the session to let you guys know, like, this is, this is coming, this session. We expect there to be movement on, uh, on bills filed. Um, uh, and on that, there's been, uh, three different kind of policy proposals. The governor has his proposal. Uh, there are two bills, um, in the House and one bill in the Senate. Um, and so there are really kind of right now, three large proposals. And, um, I won't get into detail on, um, any of them because the legislative process is very iterative and so not one of them, I, you can't point to one of the bills right now and say, this is the one that's going to get passed. There'll probably be a combination of all three pieces of legislation. Uh, but I think it's important for the school committee now to be thinking about looking at, at all the three proposals and kind of their baseline. And we have information on them that you guys can look at. And there are other school districts that have plugged in their numbers into these three proposals to see which ones they benefit from the most and which components they benefit from the most. So, we can, um, after this meeting, we can share with you that information about the proposals and what other school districts have done, uh, so that you guys could recreate that here on Nantucket. Uh, but essentially, you know, this goes back to, um, uh, the fact that education has changed so much since the 1993 law. And the costs have changed dramatically and our demographics have also changed. And so the Foundation Budget, um, Review found that we were basically shortchanging our education system by around, around $2 billion, which is a massive amount of money because as a state, we spend around a little over $5 billion currently. So, that's a massive short change. And so, um, this review found, um, several main components that have gone dramatically underfunded. Julian mentioned rising healthcare costs. We've seen that in every single sector of our economy and of course, education's a big part of that. Uh, the formula back from 1994 has not kept pace at all, uh, with the healthcare costs that we see today. Uh, there are several other metrics as well. Special education funding has not keep, kept track with, um, the funding that is needed to educate special education, um, students today. English language learners, that needs to be, that funding formula needs to be dramatically changed, uh, to reflect the increased costs associated with educating English language learners. Um, and I think, you know, when we talk about Nantucket, you know, when, and you look at these formulas that we can send over, that I think should probably be one of the main focuses, if not the main focus. Because, um, relative to the rest of the state, Nantucket's numbers are pretty similar to state averages, oftentimes, um, uh, better than what the state average is. Um, uh, or, uh, but, but around ELL students, um, you guys have a 50% increase over the state, over the state average, which is truly remarkable. And just, and it's really something I think, uh, Nantucket is, is really proud of, um, just the diversity of students from, uh, around the world in the school. But we need to make sure that you guys are getting, uh, reimbursed, uh, the correct costs, uh, for educating, um, those students. Uh, there's going to be a low income change. There's been, uh, we've seen an increased cost and how much it costs to, uh, fully fund the education of low income students that hasn't been changed, uh, in 20 years. And also just generally around technology in schools, right? I mean, I was four in 1994 when this was implemented and I remember, you know, now you have like electronic, you know, boards in classrooms and computers in classrooms. Uh, so the, the cost of technology has dramatically changed as well. And so those are kind of the main, uh, five areas that we're going to be looking at and the House and Senate, um, are, are already really digging into in terms of changing the formula to better reflect the need. Um, and so we can, we have, we have kind of a breakdown, um, of each of those bills. We won't get into that now, but we'll make sure you guys have that information. And if you guys could review that and let us know what, what, what best reflects Nantucket's needs so that we can better advocate for you, uh, at the State House when this policy comes up for debate. Um, and, and that's coming in the next kind of year, uh, year and a half. So, something to kind of try and grapple on to, uh, in, in the nearer term.
So, you can forward that, those proposals to the superintendent?
No, so that we can, we can work with, so when this is coming up for negotiation in the House and in the Senate, we are armed with information about what, uh, what, what funding pieces best fit, uh, Nantucket's needs so that we can push for them.
I misquestioned you.
Yeah.
Um, you said you would send us those
Yep.
three proposals to look at.
Yep.
To the superintendent for distribution?
Sure. If that's, what, what do you prefer?
Is that the easiest way?
What do you prefer? That's your favorite? Yeah, yeah, happy to.
Uh, from a timeline perspective, actually, the timeline is actually quite aggressive. So, last session, actually, um, Foundation Budget Review Commission bills, uh, the Senate actually has passed it twice. The House actually took a little bill and passed it. Uh, the negotiations fell apart. It didn't get across the finish line last session. Um, we have a recomposition of the committees. We have a new committee chair in, in the Senate. Uh, and my understanding is the committee is actually going to be putting on a bill, uh, in June, uh, in, 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 in early June. Uh, this may be something we vote on as soon as, uh, you know, the, the, the summer break. Um, so, so it is moving quickly. Uh, in the negotiations, there's broad consensus. If you look at, you know, there's the governor bill, there's a House bill, and then there's a Senate bill, or, or what's called the Promise Act, which is the MTA, so the MTA's bill, uh, the MTA's supporting. Uh, there's broad consensus about what we need to do around healthcare. We're not, we're, we're not accounting for the true cause of healthcare in the foundation budget. We need to fix it. There's pretty broad consensus around needing to actually account for special education costs, both in district and out of district. Um, as an aside, I'll mention the Senate, the draft Senate budget came out today, um, and, and we fully fund the special education circuit breaker, which I think is the first time we've actually done that. And I bet we'll be fighting to make sure we get that in conference. Um, for English, English language students, um, for ELL, there's broad consensus about it. Uh, a, a lot of the conversation is actually about how do we tier students and that, the, with an understanding that the resources that a district may need for an ELL student who is maybe in elementary school is different than someone in middle or high school, right? And having the formula reflect that from a resource perspective. Where the real gulf is, is around how do we count low income students? Um, and how we count will basically be, be, be a difference of a pretty big gulf. So, if you take the governor's numbers, um, in 10 years, the total additional costs in, in addition to inflation, from current inflation of the foundation budget, um, in, in Chapter 78, uh, would be about $600 million. It's a lot of money. Uh, but actually, if you would implement the, the Promise Act, uh, it would be about $2 billion. Uh, those are all really sizable chunks of rev-, you know, of revenue needs. You can't, it's really hard to sort of cut or, or sort of nip and tuck and find that. Uh, so I think part of the negotiation is going to be, what do we project that revenue to be? Uh, both Dylan and I have been on the record strongly about the need for, for more revenue. Um, part of that has been the support of the Fair Share Amendment, uh, which is asking millionaires and billionaires to pay their fair share. Um, we expect that'll go to the voters in 2022. Uh, but, but that's where the, uh, that's where the, 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 the biggest debate is. And also in how do we, um, look at the deciles? You know, Nantucket's currently at the sixth, sixth decile. Uh, I think if, 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 if the Senate Chair had his way, um, and actually, we had a meeting on Friday, and I want to thank Pauline for traveling all the way over, over to Barnstable on a Friday afternoon to be part of that meeting. Uh, he came down and we met with, we had superintendents and, and school committee members and representatives from, from most of the districts on the Cape and on Nantucket, uh, and Martha's Vineyard. Um, you know, ideally, the, the, the funding for those deciles would look like, uh, sort of a hockey stick, right? Sort of a gradual increase and then a significant increase for particularly schools in, 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 um, the higher deciles. So, so that's where, that, that, that's where sort of what, what's in the mix. Uh, the other, uh, piece that's out there, which is, has relevance to Nantucket, is looking at a rural, uh, school aid funding formula. This is something my colleague, Senator Adam Hines, who represents the Berkshires, he actually represents, uh, four counties, so, uh, mu- much, I think of the third half of, of, of the western part of the state, um, has pushed for a rural school aid. Uh, this is something I've really supported. This will, will benefit Nantucket, uh, and it's something that I, I think is critically important. There's also a whole host of other challenges that we know that school districts, including Nantucket, are grappling with. It was great to hear about how, um, you know, the prior program was talking about getting it, you know, social emotional learning and helping students navigate that world. Uh, I, I expect you'll see a lot of conversation around mental health and mental health in children. Um, early education is something I think that we need to do more on. Um, and, and then just the challenges of how, you know, you have a, uh, you know, with, with rapidly diversifying schools, uh, you know, how, how do you accommodate that? How do you, how does school culture change? How's it take, uh, into account a racial justice lens? Um, you know, these, these are things that, that we're talking about, um, more broadly, I think, at the state level. But the, the primary focus, you know, immediately before us and, and likely, we will, will have a bill we could be voting on in the next several months, is around Chapter 70, um, funding formula, um, and, and reform to that. The idea is that we know we can't, if we try to redistribute the pie, it won't, we won't be able to advance anything, uh, just given, given the politics of that. Uh, if we do enlarge the pie, uh, then, then we hope that, that more and more folks will win and have advantages. Um, and I think that Nantucket does stand to benefit, particularly, um, in the ELL, the ELL student piece, and also how we count low income students. So, currently, that's counted as basically if you're receiving some sort of state benefit, um, you know, a student who's either on mass health or, or SNAP benefits or other benefits, uh, like that. Um, what I've heard from many schools, and, and, and I suspect you folks may say the same, is that either having the ability to count, um, based on free and reduced lunch, or some other, some other sort of manual count, uh, would be helpful in, in, uh, getting the most accurate portrait of, of need, of the true need that you have in your community and your school.
Yeah. And the previous speakers mentioned undocumented students. I mean, there's a, that would be particularly helpful for Nantucket in terms of counting the large, um, undocumented population and making sure that you guys are fully funded, um, based on that.
You can't ask somebody whether they're...
So, we don't, actually, in the county we're talking about, we, we don't actually go there. Um, we just, one proposal is, is basically using a, a free and reduced lunch model, which I believe is not discriminatory or related to documentation. Uh, and another is actually looking at actually doing a manual count. So, using free and reduced lunch and maybe other sort of metrics that the school would estimate. Um, one thought is to give school districts sort of a, a menu of options, right? So, for school districts who like the old model, you can keep it. For school districts who want to use free and reduced lunch, you can do that. And then to have a manual option, um, you know, it, 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 I, I could see a district like Nantucket being able to do a manual count. Um, I can see if you're, you're Boston Public Schools, that being a much more sort of daunting endeavor.
And, you know, and the last, Julian mentioned this, but, um, yeah, there's been a big push, uh, to get more funding for education. The Foundation Budget Review showed that we had a, a, a $2 billion shortfall, but we have a, we just did the budget in the House. You got, these guys are doing the budget in the Senate next week. We have a $42.7 billion state budget. $2 billion's a heck of a lot of money, uh, to carve out of that budget. And so at the end of the day, um, we can talk about funding for our schools and how we need more funding. We gotta have more funding. We need more funding for our students. But we, uh, we need to raise revenue in order to secure that funding
Yeah.
for our students. Um, and that's something that, uh, we've been really committed to this session. And that's another discussion, um, not one to be had here, but one that we're having, um, at the House and Senate level about raising revenues, um, this session, not just on the millionaire's tax, but a, a host of other different proposals to raise this needed revenue to fully fund our education system. So, um, that's a different component of this, but some, but one that is, uh, uh, probably the most important in terms of kind of where do we get this money to meet that shortfall? Yeah, so you guys have any questions? Do we nail it?
I don't know about nail it, but, well, I don't have any questions.
Well, I was pre-education reformer on school committee. Um, when you run out of millionaires and billionaires, who are you going to go after?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, you know, well, well, so there's a couple of different proposals. Uh, one is around, um, uh, taxing, um, capital gains. Um, that's something that Massachusetts has relative to other states, uh, low capital gains taxes. There's been a proposal, um, in the House. I don't know if the Senate has a similar proposal that increases capital gains tax to, that would raise about a billion dollars, um, in revenue. Um, and that's something that, uh, you know, is generally a progressive tax, right?
Yeah, if you look at Massachusetts, we're, we're not as progressive as, as one would assume we would be, um, from a state taxation perspective. Uh, in the Senate, we actually have a working group, uh, that's looking at revenue more, more broadly. Um, you know, I, I think a whole host of i- items being on the table. Uh, there's a lot of actually talk about transportation, uh, revenue. And, uh, I think there's a lot of talk, and I think you're going to see this move around the use of tolling, um, and having tolling much more widespread to pay for infrastructure needs. Um, another reason why we're in this situation of sort of, there's a $2 billion funding gap, you, you'll recall, I think in, uh, I don't know the exact year, but there was a ballot initiative that lowered
2000.
2000, lowered the personal income, uh, tax from 6% to 5%. Uh, that, of course, the ballot initiative was amended by the legislature, uh, and so it was done
Gradually.
gradually over certain segments.
Yeah.
But we're basically at 5% now. Um, that's actually probably where some of that $2 billion in funding is from, uh, you know, uh, so, so I think part of it is, is we've, uh, created a little bit of this. I think there is a commitment to look at revenue and I think that it is important that in any conversation about school funding, um, you know, we often hear, you know, we want, we need more resources to do our work. Um, we agree, but I think there needs to be a real active conversation about revenue. And it is going to involve, um, you know, some people, maybe many people paying more to, you know, if we're actually going to live up to what's in our state constitution. Um, part of, part of the reason and part of the movement on education reform this session, frankly, has been the threat of a lawsuit against the state, um, brought by a number of underfunded districts, um, which, which likely had some legs to it. And so I think, you know, we're trying, we're trying to move on this. Uh, but it is, it is one of the most sort of complicated areas of policy and it's tied so closely to, you know, the revenue piece. And, and, and that's, you know, some of the hardest stuff that we deal with, right? Because no one wants to, everyone wants to talk about lowering taxes, not sort of raising them in any way.
And Massachusetts has been, I mean, it's a, Taxachusetts was a term from the 1970s. It's incredibly outdated from today. And now we're actually, if you look at, um, uh, the, you know, taxes for states, Massachusetts is around the middle of the pack in the nation, although we claim to be, uh, a, a progressive state that, that funds education and funds healthcare and the like. Um, but in reality, we, we have been underfunding all of these programs and a large part of that is from the 2000 tax increase. So, if you look at, um, you know, if you look at all of these gr- all of these different So if you look at, um, you know, if you look at all of these gr- all of these different areas of the government and all of these different services that have been, uh, underfunded and had their funding cut. In a large part, it's not because of the two thousand nine economic crash. It's because of our massive reduction in income taxes. And income tax is how Massachusetts raises the vast, the vast majority of its revenue. And so that two thousand cut is what devastated, um, all of our, our, uh, our funding to these different programs, much more so than, um, the financial crisis. Although that gets blamed on sometimes.
How many people checked off to pay the five point five percent?
That's a good question, I don't think very many.
And, you know, the automatic gas tax idea sort of died and it being.
Yeah, it's kind of resurging though.
Having life breathed back into it, but, I mean, I think, I agree with it, that we have to, I think we have to look at where we're spending.
Yeah.
Because I think there are certain other areas that are way out of line.
I mean, the, the area that, that takes up the biggest chunk of, of the budget by far of the state is, is healthcare. So, so mass health is, is forty percent of the budget, give or take. Um, you add in other health and human ser- services spending, it's, it's over fifty percent. Now, now we've made a, a decision, you know, yes, from a policy perspective and from a, um, you know, and a humanitarian perspective, but, but especially for a quality of life perspective, that actually in making investments in healthcare, uh, you know, like education is actually a, has been a good investment for us. And we've worked really hard, we're even working hard now around expanding mass health reimbursement for things like, uh, nutrition and trying to look at, how do you actually take some of the services that you folks are providing here in the school, which you're, you know, you're doing a heck of a lot more than, than classroom time? And how do you get, you know, support for that? Um, I, I, I think that the, you know, the, 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 the approach to really have a, a task force that's working on this to look at these sticky issues is, is important and is wise. Because it's really, it's really politically difficult, um, and that when the legislature has taken action, as you, you know, rightly mentioned, um, that's also been changed by ballot initiative. And so I, I think it is important though, it would be disingenuous for Dylan and I to come here and say, oh, we're gonna pass this whole big, you know, change. The revenue piece is really important. And so if we're gonna be able to make any of these changes, particularly helping E L L students and low income students, um, you know, that, that's gonna be hard in the conversation. I just don't have, I don't think we have any definitive answers of what that'll be. And it's gonna take a lot of kind of wrangling and, um, political organizing and, and hand wringing to get us there.
Also on the revenue piece, probably the largest windfall of money that this town will receive in the last, I don't know, twenty years, is through the short-term remac- occupancy pa- tax that we passed this past session. I mean, Nantucket stands to benefit, um, uh, from this more than any other municipal, uh, the three hundred and fifty-one municipalities and the entire Commonwealth. And so, uh, you're gonna, the town is gonna see, uh, probably the biggest increase in revenue, not, not after this summer, but after next summer. Um, and I don't know, a quarter of a century probably, um, just because of the.
Probably the best, biggest chunk of money we'll bring from the state directly.
Yeah.
It was something that never passed a town meeting when this was brought up. People were quite comfortable, uh, avoiding it and I think, you know, some of the hotels had brought it up.
Yeah, but you need a home rule, see, they would've needed a home rule petition, which is a, a bit more of a challenge than just a town meeting vote. Um, but, uh, uh, doesn't stop you guys from sending up a lot of home rules, but that's, uh, but like Province Town, um, uh, has sent up a home rule for that. Falmouth, my hometown of Falmouth, actually sent up a, sent up a home rule on that as well. And, um, you know, I think that's part of what got the ball moving on that is, is, uh, the legislature seeing that towns from, municipalities from across the Commonwealth were generally supportive of a leveling that playing field.
Are, are there other kind of broader education challenges or issues or topics that, that you folks are grappling with? Um, where you want input from the state or resources from the state or just, you know, from a policy perspective? I mean, I know we've been focusing on, uh, the chapter seventy piece, but there's a heck of a lot more that, you know, your schools do, uh, than, than, than just the, the state aid piece. And I think, um, wherever we sort of shake out with state aid, uh, hopefully Nantucket will get some more resources through E L L, um, probably through low income, also through this rural school aid, uh, but I don't know if it'll be, you know, uh, trans- a transformative amount of money. Um, are there other kind of issues or challenges or things we should be aware of that we can help?
Well, I think student health, uh, around particularly addiction because I have a suboxone program. But I, I got into it because I was handing out diplomas as chairman of the school committee on several occasions to students, that I subsequently saw with addiction issues. And I think extra funding around those areas, I think is extremely important. It fits in with the social emotional, but it is a, uh, it is a real problem out here as it is across the Commonwealth.
But, I was just gonna say, I think the increasing, um, level of identified depression and anxiety and some of the subjects that were covered on Friday evening. Um, and, and we've seen that and in our budget this year, we've, we've increased our support in, in social workers and guidance and across the board because we're seeing that at the early ages all the way through high school and I don't see that going away. Um, another area I would say, I'm kind of curious, not to put, um, the cart before the horse, but if we have universal pre-K. Are you looking at the early childhood aspect and seeing how that's gonna, um, impact schools? Because we're going to, um, again, we're gonna be looking at needing more teachers and bringing in, you know, four-year-olds will need the space and the resources. So just wondering where that is in the conversation on, on this.
So on, on the student health piece, uh, you know, this is something where I, I, I think actually you will see some action. And even in the budget that was released today, um, you know, there, there's a ten million, ten million dollars of a whole new initiative around, uh, um, a mental health, uh, series of programs that are directed to, to young people and children. Um, and actually the senate president, this is sort of her number one sort of personal priority. And, and the, the, the committee I chair is the joint committee on mental health, substance use and recovery. Um, you know, and, and, and the senate president has talked about and, and we're talking about, you know, nothing less than trans- transformational change, uh, in mental health. Uh, I, I think it's actually inaccurate to say we have a mental healthcare system, we don't, we have component parts of a system. Um, you know, how do we, how do we get there? Uh, you know, it's, it's a whole host of, um, initiatives, everything from workforce to insurance coverage, uh, to, you know, a whole list of kind of really specific policies. It's also about culture change, right? You know, we, we, we don't talk about mental health in the way that we talk about, um, uh, health needs that, that, that are, are medical or surgical in nature. And so I think part of what we're gonna need to do and we're talking about doing, and actually there's a, another chunk of money in this budget for a significant, uh, public awareness campaign around mental health, which is something we actually haven't done in the state since nineteen ninety-six. Um, but a lot of it's about culture change, right? And even talking about, you know, especially people who are in positions of leadership, talking about, you know, your own experience with mental health and the own str- you know, the own struggles and, and, you know, the senate president models that with her, um, you know, and her father who really struggled with that. Uh, you know, I try to talk more and more about the challenges I've had, you know, with mental health and, and anxiety wasn't when I was in high school. And, and, you know, I remember I was a senior and I woke up screaming in the middle of night and, you know, I was fortunate to have a great pediatrician and, and, um, got some support, medication and, and, uh, you know, but, but, but through my lifespan, I've really relied on, I've had mental health challenges and I've really relied on mental healthcare. Um, but what I've found is, you know, I can barely get, uh, you know, I actually can't get insurance to cover my own, you know, the, the, my own therapist. Uh, and if I can't figure out how to navigate the system of insurance coverage, um, I'm probably the most savvy consumer you could imagine. Uh, so imagine what, uh, you know, where everyone else is. So I think that culture change piece is, is really important. So a lot there, I think on student health, I'm really interested in initiatives about, alright, you know, school is a location where you have, you know, these students and young people are captive, I don't, I mean, or, or, um, you have their attention, right, they're here, hopefully they're not captive. Uh, but, uh, they might be, they might think they are, sometimes it feels, sometimes we feel like we're captive. But, uh, you know, how do you bring services, uh, provision of services? There's a lot of talk about, um, you know, s- uh, community health planners doing work in schools. How, how do we advance that and promote that? Of course, though, it ties back to funding, uh, and, and so I think there's a big piece there. On universal pre-K, I, I don't think you're gonna see, the big push is on chapter seventy. I actually think that the push you'll see, um, maybe more from a local perspective. And so I have two towns in my district, Walthfleet and Mashpee, that have implemented universal pre-K. We've actually talked about having other towns do it, we think that there's actually resources in our communities to do this. It would be a, 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 a really good investment, we know it makes sense from a, 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 from a pedagogy perspective. Um, but of course there's challenges. Yes, with the funding, also at, like, just space, uh, there's a workforce challenge, right? Early, early education educators are paid, um, you know, cents on the dollar compared to what K through twelve teachers are paid. And, and K through twelve teacher, teachers are already underpaid, so, so, some big challenges there. I think that, um, on the, the universal pre-K, local initiatives would, um, I think local initiatives are gonna move the ball forward sooner than state action, just given, give, given the work that's going on, uh, to try to fix the chapter seventy formula for K through twelve.
And on early ed, the house just took up, uh, the budget and we allocated another twenty million dollars, um, above the last fiscal year uh, for early educators, which marks, I think, a four percent increase in early educator salaries. And so, you know, we've really made, the house and the speaker in particular has really made a commitment on, um, on, 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 on trying to meet the needs of early education. But again, it's gonna take a lot of money, but twenty million dollars over last year was a, a really significant investment. And then on the, um, on the opioid piece, in the opioid bill we did last session, it sets up, uh, a prevention fund. Uh, again, that fund needs more money than, uh, was allocated in it. Um, but that's all, that's aimed squarely at, um, uh, prevention in schools at a really young age. Because we know and you know better than anyone that, um, you know, uh, uh, education on this can start in elementary school, you know, and, and, and should work its way up in terms of having, uh, uh, learning about, uh, preventative measure, measures to not get hooked on any number of substances, but opioids, fentanyl and the like are so prevalent now. And then actually for our region, I believe alcohol is still actually the number one killer, doesn't, not, not as quickly as, um, um, the other more, um, uh, immediately harmful substances. But, you know, we're, we're a region that needs a whole host of, uh, uh, education on this because so much of the funding in, on this is out the, isn't during the middle and on the back end. And only a very small percentage has been on the prevention front. Uh, but that's something that we've both been pushing forward and, and, and that bill that we did, uh, uh, last session was, uh, has a, a fund for that. Uh, so we can get more information on that and how that can maybe be able to tie into the schools too.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna bring that up also, the, just the conversation on prevention across the board. I mean, twenty-five years ago, I worked for a local AIDS network and the state funding and federal funding was coming in to do AIDS prevention, safe sex, education, of course, the smoking, uh, programs around the schools. And then it seemed to be, um, maybe about twenty years ago, the funding all went away, all dried up. And I, I have not been aware that there's been a whole lot of prevention dollars going back into schools and also in, you talked, you talked about bringing in resources, community resources, but if they're not funded to come in, and the other issue is too, is the time. You know, our, our school time is limited, yes, we have these kids who here for, um, a large part of the day, but we have so many requirements to teach these students during the school day. Where is the time to be able to do all of this?
Yeah.
And I, I would throw in technology as a piece that I think is gonna be a new prevention, um, requirement. From what we're seeing with our kids who are growing up with iPads at the age of three and, and, and what they're seeing, it's not just so much having the screen time, but what they're witnessing, um, because of the lack of education and, and prevention, so I see that being.
Your, your timeline is, is, is correct, so actually you can thank Governor Romney for this. Um, there was about twenty-three million in tobacco settlement money annually that was funding broad prevention efforts in schools. Um, I know about this quite well because it funded in part the Safe Schools for LGBTQ Students Program. Um, all of that was cut, I think, two thousand and two, two thousand and three time period, um, maybe two thousand and four. And, uh, that money's just never been replaced. Um, for the Safe Schools Program, we actually got a dedicated funding stream for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, that goes to the Department of Elementary Education, but it's overseen by a LGBTQ Youth Commission. Um, and actually that's a program that's, I know, provided services on Nantucket, specifically around title assistance for transgender and gender non-conforming students, um, that you have here in the district. Uh, but, but broadly, you know, that, that twenty-three million, um, evaporated and, and it hasn't come back. And so now more and more we're asking schools to do more. Uh, there's actually a push both from a regulatory level, E S E's gonna be updating their, um, curriculum frameworks for, uh, health ed, um, which includes a number of really great provisions we wanna see from a public health perspective. Um, but, you know, where's the funding attached to it? There's a companion, Healthy Youth Bill, that both Dylan and I are supportive of, um, updating a whole, those are things that are long out of date. But the question comes to, you know, how, how are you gonna fund it? Uh, and just sort of adding on to, adding on to the obligations that, that you all have already. You know, the meeting that you and I were both at, I think you may, might've had to dash and get the vote by the time we started talking about this. But there's a lot of conversation about the amount of time that's being dedicated to testing. And, and I, and I, I think, you know, from, from all the superintendents I've talked to and, and many of the educators, I, we, we've gone way overboard. I mean, you know, I, I, I recall my own experience, which, which, which seemed pretty fair at the time. You know, you had to pass a, you had to pass some sort of requirement to, to graduate high school, um, you did it sophomore year. Now it's basically testing that happens in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, you know, it's just, um, so much of that time and energy. And I think we've gone way overboard. Uh, there does seem to be some conversation about trying to reel that in. Um, but again, that's time, even if we can get that back, that should go to instruction, not a whole laundry list of other things that we wanted to, so.
We just got our testing coordinator. Let's go easy on this.
Right, but you had to hire a testing coordinator, you know, just to navigate that.
So we didn't, so we didn't use our, our guidance people. I mean, my wife is a guidance person for the last fifteen years of her career and it's a waste of time to put those people doing it.
Yeah.
You know, I, you brought up, I'll bring up mental health again because we had a number of teen suicides a few years ago. And everybody got excited and then everything went away.
Yeah.
And we have a psychiatrist on island a couple of times a month. Uh, I have a contract with Gosnold, um, for some in-office coordination. But if I have a kid with a mental health issue that requires a bed, the kid's gonna probably be in the next grade by the time we get him a bed.
Yeah.
And that's something I think the state has to step up for.
Yeah.
Because if we took care of broken legs, the way we deal with mental health, um, it wouldn't be pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Ab- absolutely, I mean, and, and this is the, um, and, and the problem is, is compounded and, and we've been doing a lot of work, uh, around off-island medical transportation, particularly for people who are, you know, struggling with either, uh, you know, addiction or, or mental illness, or in many cases it's co-occurrence. Um, you know, and we actually figured out a solution and then the ambulance company that the hospital contracted with went out of business. Um, so it was back to the drawing board. But this is just, you know, we, we, a lot of the conversation is around parity, basically meaning in, in law, both in state law and under, um, the Affordable Care Act and other federal laws, uh, the insurers are required to have what's called parity between behavioral health and meds, you know, medical and surgical healthcare. Um, we know that's not, that's clearly not happening, we know that. Uh, just getting action to figure out how do we, how do we use the tools in place? Um, there is such an unwillingness to even use the regulatory tools that currently exist, that the Department of Insurance currently has. Um, you know, that actually we're likely gonna be taking up legislation to basically compel this to happen. Uh, but it is a, you know, I, I think the lens of saying that we need transformational change in this system or we need transformational change in mental health, moving more from a component parts to a system, um, is the right, you know, right lens. And I, and I encourage, you know, um, you know, a- anyone who has per- the feedback and perspective on this, I don't wanna dominate the rest of your, you know, the rest of your meeting on a long agenda tonight. Um, but we're actively looking for, um, you know, both innovative ideas and substantive policy changes that need to happen. And I think that there is, you know, certainly, um, you know, among many players, there's some political will to do this. And I, and I think we need to do it if you look at, um, you know, if you look at mortality and mortality, uh, it's just very, it's just so clearly pointing to, um, a real mental health crisis that we have.
I would agree.
Taking patients off on the sheriff's van is not.
No, I know, I know. And so this actually, there was another, uh, uh, contagion recently, um, in the past year, about a different, uh, demographic. Uh, mostly kind of middle-aged, um, white males actually, right? And so, uh, we, uh, looking at our staffers up there, Tom Dixon and from the Nantucket Island liaison, Pat Johnson. And, uh, we helped convene, uh, with a, a number of other people on island, a group. with a, a number of other people on island, a group. Uh, and we called in the state on this as well, uh, to convene a group to kind of put everyone's heads together on what additional resources, um, can be leveraged to help out on these, um, these suicide contagions that happen, uh, on Nantucket. And it almost seems kind of cyclical. But that was something that, um, you know, we were pretty active in at the time. And, and a group still meets very regularly on it.
What's gonna happen when we need to build a new high school? Is the state?
Well, did you apply?
You apply?
Not yet.
Apply as soon as you can. It's a long list.
MSBA, the Mass School Building.
Oh, man.
You know, they, I, actually, I've had a number of, uh, districts across, you know, the, the school districts in my larger senate district, apply and actually get approval. They're, they're, they're doing, we're doing quite well. Actually, the big concern we have, I, I'm a school district, um, a regional district that is, uh, coming apart at the seams and it, it might be turning down a hundred and forty million dollars of state aid, so.
So, apply now.
But I, I think certainly, uh, that's a process where, you know, I think there's clear guidelines for that. Please let us know how we can assist with that. Any, anytime, you know, you're applying for anything, whether it's MSBA or any other kind of applications or grants, um, we're always glad to, to, to chime in. And I think it's helpful when you have that, uh, kind of documentation of support. It's sort of just expected. It's part of the application. Uh, so.
I believe our superintendent is, mention it to the selectmen and spoil their supper.
Having just opened an intermediate school two years ago.
Um, you know, I, I think what, what's unique for Nantucket, at least in, in my district, i- is that you folks are actually growing in school population. The rest of the communities I represent actually would be envious to, of the problem that you have. Declining enrollment is actually our big concern. Certainly on the outer and lower Cape, um, but really across Cape Cod, you know, we're sort of in a.
School district, the entire Cape and Islands.
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're kind of in a demographic death spiral in the region. If you look at where we're going. My hometown of Truro, by twenty thirty, sixty-five percent of the community is gonna be over sixty-five. I mean, it's just not sustainable. You know, and we're talking about, there's maybe seven or eight thousand people who live from the Rotary in Orleans to P-Town. You folks are arguably maybe twice that size when you actually account for the real population here. Um, so there's actually a lot of strengths that Nantucket has. And, and, and your increasing enrollment is actually a, um, a, a, a real asset. And, and you're not confronting the challenges that, um, I think most of the other districts, certainly that we represent, are gonna have to struggle with around consolidation or school closures or, or those things.
And I imagine you don't deal with a lot of the kind of charter school reimbursement issues that many of the other districts have to go through as well. I mean, that's a, that's a huge issue for some of, some of our, the towns we represent.
We do get an influx of students from the private schools coming in, in, uh, the middle school, the high school. So, we have to be prepared for that.
Yep.
Thank goodness we have the private schools, 'cause they both have around a hundred students each. So we would be, be a lot there if we had.
And then, and then affordable housing is added on into all of this.
Right, of course.
Big, big thing.
So, so the hu- the housing issue is critical and acute. Um, probably nowhere more acute than, than here on Nantucket, but across the region. You folks have actually, again, been, been more proactive than other places. Uh, what we're trying to look at now, and I've actually filed a bill, Dylan and I filed a bill, an act relative to attainable housing in seasonal communities, that looks at, um, a number of sort of smaller challenges that our communities have run into around housing. You know, how do we go about, covenant housing, for instance, isn't counted by the state as, as affordable housing. Um, you know, another challenge we've seen is how do you, how do you incentivize people who are already renting, you know, maybe renting at affordable rates to keep renting, so to have a property tax, some sort of abatement or relief there if you're, if you continue to rent, um, at affordable rates. One piece of the bill looks at models from North Carolina and California around, uh, school districts and municipalities investing in housing. And housing developments particularly as it relates to a workforce issue. Uh, so this is a huge challenge. Uh, you know, not only, you know, not only recruiting, but also retaining staff. Uh, and so those provisions, it also includes the, um, Home Rule petition in Nantucket around, the trans, an additional surcharge on the real estate transfer fee for home sales over two million. Um, so, so we're trying to advance that. You know, the more controversial Home Rule piece of that might, might have to come out of the bill as we're moving it. But I think there are a number of common sense things we can do to advance that, to, to basically give the town, uh, more tools in that toolkit around housing. Um, it's a critical issue. There's also a critical health and public health component issue. You know, we know, there, there are not, there are almost not enough units here to house all the people that we know actually live here. Uh, I'm sure you know this much better than, than we do with, with your students who are living in these situations. But this is a significant public health concern. And, and, and I think that, you know, housing is just one of the biggest challenges we face. Probably the biggest thing that we can do in housing is actually something, is action we already took. So last, at the end of last session, uh, we created a Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, uh, which provides a dedicated state revenue stream for wastewater, uh, wastewater management. Yes, it can be alternative me- measures, but more specifically around sewers. Um, and, and, and that probably is, is the biggest kind of chunk of resources we can provide from the state around supporting more housing development. Um, and, and the kind of denser, the denser housing that we need that makes sense in, in multi-units, is a huge challenge. Uh, it also is, we're limited, um, you know, there, there's a number of steps we can take at the state, but many of these decisions are local. And add, add to the complexity that some of the tools that are out there, um, are, are controversial and really difficult to navigate. So it's, we're, we're right there with you. It's, it's tremendously difficult. If there are impediments that you're seeing, from a housing perspective, let us know. That, that's how we're able to craft this bill. Uh, and if there's other pieces that are out there, we wanna know that, 'cause I think we're trying to make the argument, you know, the, another issue in, in the ether on Beacon Hill is doing a housing production bill, and the governor has a bill, and, you know, probably it does some good things. But, you know, the argument I'm making is like, well, that's not gonna make a difference in Nantucket. That's not gonna make a difference, like, in Provincetown. That's not gonna make a difference for, you know, seasonal communities, which, you know, we have a totally out-of-whack real estate market. Um, but it's not being driven by, you know, the forces that are driving things in, in Greater Boston. It's being driven by a second, third, and fourth homeowner market. So feed, more feedback from a politis, policy perspective gives us specific things to run on. And then we can make the argument around, all right, this is what geographically isolated, um, and sort of neglected parts of the Commonwealth deserve.
I'm good. I'm amazed at how much you guys know. It's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your time.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
In that, uh, vein, then, we'll have Martin talking about our third quarter budget update.
Hi, Martin.
Good evening. Um, the third quarter is, uh, very much on par, as you've seen, with the last, um, year's third quarter performance percentage-wise. We've, uh, expanded, um, seventy-two percent of the total operating budget as of the end of the, uh, third quarter and sixty-five percent of the payroll. Um, expenses have increased, um, this year by seven hundred and forty-two thousand, a little over seven hundred and forty-two thousand, driven mostly by payroll contractual obligations, as well as, uh, increased repair and maintenance costs this year that we've encountered, uh, in numerous areas, predominantly HVAC maintenance, which I've mentioned several times. We've been tracking with the, the help of Michelle and Diane Utilities, uh, Utility Use, and, um, this year, fuel is trending a little higher than, than last year. The average price per gallon is around two sixty, as opposed to last year for the first nine months was around two, between two and two, two dollars and ten cents. Electricity and propane are very much on par. They've kept steady expense-wise and consumption, consumption-wise for, for, for this year. That's the most, the synopsis I have for the operating budget. I mean, if you have any.
But it wasn't a particularly bad one.
No, it wasn't. No. But, um, I, it's just the price that's driven it, not so much the consumption for, on the fuel side.
And you've been able to cover the maintenance issues as supr- they were a surprise, I think, in their increases?
It was a whole study done on the whole system. We decided to delve into it and we found different issues with it. Uh, we have been able, yes, we do have some, uh, budgets for repair and maintenance that have been able to cover it. But, um, we're hopeful that this is a one-time, um, expense or, or investment into, into the system. Um, it's been on nu- numerous areas, just, um, obsolete parts and things that need replacing and fixing. So it works more efficiently and more consistently. The community school, community school continues, um, a trend of very strong performance. The third quarter revenues, um, program revenues are up over fifty thousand dollars. They do show a thirty-five thousand. And I always point that out, um, that it, we have a lower appropriation this year, uh, because of the two-year, um, offset for the rental expenses that we got from town. Uh, we have fifteen thousand dollars less from town in fiscal year nineteen as opposed to fiscal year eighteen. So program revenues have been holding steady, star progr- star performance. Um, across the board, it's, it's done great. Um, Extended Day in particular has seen increased revenues of over forty-five thousand dollars. Um, Driver's Ed has kept steady with the new vehicle. It's, it's been a huge help. And the fact that it, there is being reduced repair and maintenance and time that the vehicle is not available. So that's seen over nineteen thousand dollar increase. And Adult Ed has seen close to six thousand dollars increase in this fiscal year. On the flip side, uh, we've seen, um, some decrease in the membership income in the pool, um, by about twenty, roughly twenty thousand dollars, which caused the whole, uh, revenue stream that, that's generated by the pool revolver to drop over, um, fifteen thousand dollars. And the summer camp was lower by a little, a little over ninety-five hundred dollars.
Can I just ask you on that one? Was that, and I know traces here, was that deficit because of the, um, shortness of the season? Did you go nine weeks into camp? Or did you only do seven or eight weeks? I'm just wondering where that, or was it just lower enrollment?
The ratio's changed. So we have hired more staff for the same number of camps.
Okay. But you're still getting eight weeks of camp?
Seven weeks of camp and with intensive repeat. Um, that's it.
All right. So that's slightly different from before. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Expenses have increased by over thirty-one thousand dollars as well. Again, this is mostly contractual, um, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary with, with any of the revolvers in particular. Um, the school lunch program this year has performed, um, a- as of that point, at the end of March, better subsidy-wise. Um, the, um, deficit is, uh, a little over fifty-one, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars as opposed to over sixty-eight thousand dollars a year ago. If you remember, we ended up the year strongly last year. So I mean, I'm hopeful this fifty-one thousand number will actually improve. In the last quarter, um, Linda Peterson has done a phenomenal job. I, I always make a point to compliment her, because she really cares and she does a great job with the, with the school lunch program. Um, it's, it's, continues to be a challenge for, for staffing. And whenever we lose a person, um, whether it's, uh, on short-term or, or just leaving, uh, the, the system, it's very hard. And she has to cover a lot of shifts. We've talked, have a scheduled, uh, conference call tomorrow morning with the, um, district manager, Erin Long. And we wanna discuss several issues. She's brought up also the fact that in the last fifteen years, prices have stayed steady on breakfasts and lunches. I am, I'm not looking to increase them, uh, as long as we can, um, come to a, um, contractual agreement that the subsidy is within, uh, between fifteen and sixty thousand dollars. So that's, um, I think she's done a preliminary budget. I looked at it today. It looks, it looks good. My mind and Superintendent Cosar's worry always remains. And of course, Linda Peterson is staffing. So I, I always point that out, because it's, 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 it's challenging. The free and reduced, um, um, have stayed steady, thirty-two point, uh, thirty-eight point two percent this year as a point, as opposed to thirty-eight point six last year. It's a negligent difference. Uh, it's, we've, we've stayed between thirty-six, thirty-eight percent now for the past three years. Sales increased by a little over eleven thousand dollars, uh, same number of operating days, uh, so. This, the, the budgeted subsidy for this year is sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, I am comfortable and I think we'll fall into it, but I am looking to discuss with Erin, 'cause this is, um, we signed the contract for five years, but every year we have to do a, a yearly agreement, update yearly agreement. I'm, I'm confident we can reduce this number by about ten thousand dollars.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mason.
Okay, moving on, committee discussion and votes to be taken. A vote to approve the donation to the, in the Nantucket High School Latin Club from Riccardi Marble and Granite, in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to the Latin Club from Michael Dobert in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A vote to approve the donation to the Latin Club from Mark Cutone Architecture in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to the Latin Club from Lisa Botticelli, in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. A vote to approve donation to the Latin Club from OCB LLC in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to the Nantucket High School School-to-Career Program from Cape and Islands Workforce Development Board in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation to the Nantucket High School STEM Program from the Cape Cod Club of MIT in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to the Nantucket Intermediate School Museum of Science Strip in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to the Nantucket Intermediate School Museum of Science Strip in the amount of forty-five dollars and sixty-five dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote to approve the April second, two thousand and nineteen, meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The April tenth, two thousand and nineteen organizational meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen workshop meeting minutes.
I, I don't see them in the packet. Are, do you guys see them?
Yes. The workshop?
Yeah.
Yep.
This must not be in mine. Sorry. I hadn't made, I had suggested some changes and I just wanted to make sure they were made before we.
Okay, so.
Give me a minute.
Do you want my glasses?
No, I have my contacts in. They're just, they're just rolling around, though.
While someone is looking, again, it just is amazing looking at all these donations. I don't know how many school districts get to approve ten different donations. It's a, it's really wonderful to see the amount of work that happens in, in getting them or, uh, soliciting the donation. And then, of course, the community support. Latin Club has been busy, huh?
Okay.
They weren't made, so I'd like to table them.
Okay, so we'll table the, the workshop meeting minutes until next time. Transfers and invoices?
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Enrollment?
I do, yeah. Continuing to grow.
Yes.
Well, and perhaps a bit more than shows here, um, because we've got about a dozen fifth-grade students who will be coming to our sixth grade in addition to what's listed here. Uh, so the sic- upcoming sixth grade is gonna be over a hundred and fifty kids. And I think that something needs to be looked into in terms of staffing. I know it's being looked at. I know it's being looked at, but I think it needs to be a priority.
Okay. We can ask Mike to-
I have mentioned it to Mike and to Jen, and I think Peter's able to confirm now, it was just something I heard third-hand, but it sounds like it's pretty much a done deal that those dozen additional students will be coming. So that number would read, what, a hundred and fifty-three rather than a hundred and forty-one?
Okay.
Yep.
Want to say something about the principal, Serge?
Do I want to?
Yes.
Yep, I'm making a lot of progress. We meet again tomorrow afternoon. We've had two candidates interview, one for a second interview, and we'll be discussing those tomorrow.
Okay. Subcommittee, work groups?
Nothing for me.
Oh, before we leave enrollment, quick question. The two, I see there's two entries, two withdrawals, and N E S. Can you tell me what the withdrawals were, reasons, please? She's thinking.
I am thinking.
Oh. And the one withdrawal at N I S. Okay, thank you.
Policy, any?
No, no meetings, it's our last.
Okay. Henry isn't here. The agenda for the next meeting, special education annual update, facilities update, strategic planning report, science and math conference reports.
What's I L T? What's that?
That's Donna Johnson, isn't it, doing the, um, the, um, update on the report on the twenty-first of May? Oh.
What's, what's I L T?
Leadership leadership. Isn't that what we talked about having done a conference, yeah, with the teachers?
Yeah.
Day twenty-first.
Is this where we look at the horizon?
We just did.
We are, yes, we are, yes, yes.
We are looking at the horizon.
Yes, the answer is yes.
I have discussed this with Jen. We think we should have a forum, to get the term correct, on technology use. I, I would aim it, subject to discussion and other people's thoughts at the middle school. From what I've seen, please correct me if I'm wrong, Eva Marie or Brother Bucky, I think the intermediate school and the high school pretty much have a handle on their computer usage and technology usage. There have been concerns raised at the middle school. And a forum allows, if we time it properly, input from parents as well as staff. So Jen and I at least were talking about trying to do it in May. Where in May, I would not want it to substitute for a regular school committee meeting. So at six o'clock-ish, if we want to try to encourage parents to participate and have some input and discussion.
On another date other than the twenty-first?
Yeah, I don't think it should substitute for a regular school committee meeting, no.
Can I just ask a question on the, maybe purpose is not the right word, but the expectations of the outcome of the forum?
I don't think any of that's been truly worked out. I think we had a conversation, but I didn't think we had decided for sure what we were doing, how we were going to do it, and when we were doing it.
No, that's why I brought it up, I've been discussing it with Jen, because she's the chair now. She's not here to speak for herself, I'm not speaking for her.
Should we maybe wait until she's back and we can have a conversation and give time to think about what we'd want the forum to look like, rather than just?
Well, I'm pretty-
Because I'd like the input from, from our administrators too, to see-
Oh, yeah, the staff for sure.
I don't think it's an ad hoc type thing, I think we need to look at the date.
Does ad hoc mean?
Just off the cuff, I think we need to sort of plan it out. And may I ask Jen and Mike their thoughts in picking a date?
All right, and is it possible to do that between now and the twenty-first? I'm concerned about it getting to be too late in the school year, is my thinking.
Well, even if it was too late in the ski year, do you really think our change is going to be effective for the next school year that quickly?
Ah, depends on what kinds of changes we're talking about.
Well, what kind of changes are you thinking?
There have been parent, well, one area of parent concern is the computers going home right away in September. I actually talked with some people now from other districts who have one-to-one, and there's been some discussion about that. I, that would be the first priority, if I said one, is getting input from parents and staff, sixth grade team, administration, parents, et cetera. Looking possibly, I mean, we can't operationally control how that's done without creating a policy. So I guess if we felt strongly enough about the input and the concerns, then we would have to look at that. But it's just to get input, it's hard to get input directly from staff, and by that I include administration and parents. Certainly not at a meeting like this, we don't encourage that. And a workshop doesn't really give input to the other people who attend. So a forum is the structure, I think, that we would want to use.
It is a district-wide conversation versus specifically middle school?
Well, that's why I asked, I think, I have not heard concerns from intermediate or high school parents or staff about technology usage, if they think it would be helpful or is necessary. Certainly like to hear that.
So, just off, just thinking about this, I think we might want to wait until we've got leadership sorted out at the middle school before we run a forum. That could have some interesting and thoughtful dialogue without having the leadership present.
And also, a forum is easier said than done. The thing is, how do you get people out to voice their opinion? I mean, you're going to do a survey, you're going to send out an email, an invite, it's a lot of, it is on the parking lot, but there are a lot of pieces to running a productive forum, don't you think?
Because I think the people that are going to come are going to be decided that are either for it or not. I mean, it sounds like you're saying there's a concern with the usage maybe of technology in the middle school, so if that's the case-
I think usage, I think also some concerns about the use at home.
So it's-
So I think those are the parents that will show up, which I don't know that will give us a balance.
Aren't those the parents we want to hear from?
I think we want to hear from all parents.
Well, yeah, we would obviously advertise it to bring in as many people as we could. And yes, Zona, emails, notices. However it is that we contact parents and staff to invite them to such a creature.
Steve, it's the first week in May.
I know.
Kids are going to be in school until the third week of June. So I think there's time to think this thing through and then bring it to fruition.
I, I, I think, and this is solely my personal opinion, I think there are parents concerned of the full-on issuance and use of a computer that maybe they wouldn't otherwise have done. And that's, I, I feel like that's a decision that we made as a district, how many years ago? Two, three years ago?
More like four now, I think.
And, and right now, we're in the middle of it. I think it is a conversation that may need to be had. I think the beginning of next school year might be the more appropriate time, when it's new and fresh. Not that we will make a change that year, but we at least get some feedback as to what the concerns are and why. I mean, that's just my thought.
Of course, the parents might look at it as milk already, already being spilled.
But it is, and it is now too. But I just can't see that we can make that kind of change within the next school year.
I, I don't know what kind of change you're talking about, so I don't know, that's why-
Backing off on the computers when the whole-
I wanted the input before next year, so we could see if there's anything important enough to look at changing for the beginning of next year. I don't know that there is. Two people may show up with concerns.
Right.
In which case, it's no longer a concern.
Then maybe it's a conversation that we should have with staff and see how they feel, and then kind of go from there. It sounds like a conversation that needs to be had, maybe in stages, to back off or something like this, because we can't stop cold turkey, I don't think.
How do we have input from staff that way? Without having a forum?
Well, we could, it could still be called a forum, I guess, forum is just a word.
Well, I think picking a date, let's wait until Jen and Mike are back, and then we can talk about this.
Because I think that it's a bigger topic. I mean, there are standards, there are requirements, there are classes structured around technology. And I, and I do, I think we have to hear from the staff maybe first, and, and, and hear what is, what does the sixth grade or seventh and eighth grade look like as far as technology? I mean, we all sat here, I was personally horrified to look at all of the list of the technology pieces, and we had that conversation on how the heck is everyone going to learn all of these standards by the time they get out of eighth grade? And I know you've had some observations at N I S at some of the challenges some of the students had with technology use. So I think I'm with Zona that I think we should, eh, well, first of all, we should wait till Mike and Jen are back, but I think we start with our staff and our administrators first. And then I would feel a little bit more equipped and knowledgeable on the subject before hearing. And I do think we should hear from parents, but I'd like to understand a little bit more before that, for me.
Okay.
I, I'm just pushing for before the end of the school year, and I don't know how we would get, assuming that we hire a CPS principal soon, how we make sure to get that person here for these conversations.
Yes, that's a good point.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second?
No, no.
Oh, motion?
I've got two long-awaited shout-outs.
Okay.
And unfortunately, or fortunately, they both relate to N I S. I learned at a snack meeting about something called Parent University, which, at this point, at the latter point, I guess, didn't much involve parents. But at N I S, they set up a tutoring program for parents and kids. And I attended two of those, and I have to tell you, I have to admit, I wish we could turn off the microphone so there'd be no record of it, my heart grew three sizes that first day, when after tutoring kids for forty-five minutes, they are then fed by local restaurants, and to see fifty-plus fourth and fifth graders, I believe, at six o'clock at night, they're at school voluntarily, getting two sections of forty-five minutes each of tutoring was unbelievable. Mike, thank you for that. Eva Marie, you guys pulled it off. It really warmed the cockles of my heart. The second night, it was over forty kids, you know, and like I say, voluntarily, and they're enjoying it, laughing, having a good time, being catered on the particular first night by the brotherhood. I'm not going to mention other restaurants, because I don't know all the ones that were involved, and I don't want to miss anyone, but what a great idea, and thank you for that. And my second shout-out is something I haven't been able to do for almost exactly forty years now, which is to teach third graders the enrichment program at N I S. I did a photography thing with third graders, mostly successful. The entire program was awesomely successful, six Friday mornings. I, for those of you who don't follow me on Twitter, I tweeted out what looked like a professionally-made Nantucket basket. These kids were doing unbelievable things for these six weeks. And it's just a great program, I know you're going to continue it. I hope to be involved next year, like I say, forty years, I learned a little more this year about third graders. Thank you for that.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.